I am going to be recording this call so that we can play it back later. If you've had a chance to visit our website, on the homepage, there's a link for town hall meetings. And on that link, you can see that there are 10 other meetings that we have recorded that are available for folks to watch. And so if you're interested in any of the other town halls that have occurred, please do feel free to go take a look and check those out and see some of the other conversations that have been happening up until this point in time. So we are, we're really grateful to be able to provide the avenue, the forum for a conversation like this to happen. It's something that as the board was talking about, you know, how do we respond? What are some of the things that we can do? We saw a lot of people were putting out information on here's some, here's some ideas and here's things that you can do, that kind of thing. And so we wanted to do something a little bit different. And that was where the idea for these town hall meetings came from is to create a forum where people can come together and share their thoughts, share their ideas, and we can learn from each other in the process. We've got on the call, I want to at least recognize a couple of people. I know Thea Kavanaugh is on the call and she is one of our members at large on the Board of Directors for ATRA. And I think she's the only other board member we have on the call. I am, my name is Brent Wolf and I have the privilege of serving as the Executive Director for ATRA. And so we are really happy to be able to host these meetings and just create this opportunity, this forum for folks to be able to chat. So we don't have, you know, kind of a real hard agenda for this meeting. We really want this to be driven by you guys and what's important to you and the situation that you find yourself in. There's no roadmap for the experiences that we're going through right now. There's no set of precedent. There's no historical context for kind of understanding how we handle the type of situation that we find ourselves in now. And so we really want to make this as useful to everybody who's on the call as we can. And so we will kind of start with some general kind of just prompts, but where this conversation goes. And if you want it to go a specific direction, then let's take it that way. We want this to be as beneficial to the folks, to you guys, as it possibly can be anyway. So that said, we've got, it looks like there are about 22 people who are on the call. And so this has been, everybody's practicing good Zoom etiquette right now with keeping microphones muted. When you do go to talk, just don't forget to unmute yourself. That'll be hopefully a prompt will pop up on your screen that says you're muted. If you want to talk, unmute yourself. But definitely we want to hear people's thoughts and comments on the experience. So I guess to open it up, are there issues, are there topics that are of importance to you that you want to start this conversation with? Are some things that you've experienced that would be helpful for us to try and kind of brainstorm or kind of think through together? Where do you want to start the conversation? What's the topic that you guys want to begin with?
Brent, one of the things that I have experienced working in, in the schools, prior to that, my background was working in a school at a children's psychiatric hospital. So my background's a lot of behavioral health, rec therapy. And I've come up with a design that helps kids understand how to be a positive adult. And how that works is there's the things that we learned to do and we continue to learn and what it means to be a positive adult. I'd like to share that because kids understand it, parents understand it, and it makes for a good way to have dialogue with how we proceed with delivering a service.
I was muted there, so please do, please feel free to share.
Okay, so the thing, Tom House and I presented a talk at ATRA last October, September it was, and we discussed the behavioral health aspects of rec therapy and the things that, what I've come up with is called the matrix of functional authenticity. And some of you have heard this before and I apologize if you're hearing it again, but there are things that we learn throughout elementary school from birth to be a positive adult. And those are first of all, to be safe, to be present, to let go and move on, speak your truth by saying what you mean, mean what you say, don't say it mean, and have goals. And I can, I can send a, actually the hard copy of this to folks. The things that we are continuing to learn is integrity and accountability. Integrity for my definition is to be able to be honest and trustworthy with your agreements, both spoken and unspoken, and to have accountability, which is to be able to be accepting the consequences of all your agreements, spoken and unspoken. So those are what we're learning continually throughout our life. So that's where parents are helpful in learning that as well. And then the things that we have to, are to be a positive adult is by being able to cooperate, being able to communicate, being trustworthy, being able to problem solve, and being socially and personally responsible. That's in our body. In our mind, we are able to accept unconditionally, practice forgiveness, live in the now and believe in yourself. And in spirit, it's know that you're connected to your body, your mind, and this is really irrelevant for right now, connected to all things. And we are finding with the coronavirus how important understanding our connections with everything, not just each other, but things we touch, et cetera. And what gets in the way of us being able to be a functional, authentic adult is our feelings. And so I use the zones of regulation to help students first identify what zone they're in and then giving them guidelines of how to deal with their feelings in a way that keeps them being in the green zone or calm. So that's basically the matrix and how I've used it in the schools is when I'm developing IEPs.
Dan, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but can I ask you, because we're, the purpose of this call is to kind of like address what's going on with the coronavirus and everyone working remotely now. So, so your program is great in the fact that it looks at those feelings and the behaviors that everyone's experiencing right now, being socially isolated. So do you have a plan on how you're going to implement that?
Yes.
Implementing this curriculum at home? I think that would be beneficial to share.
Yes.
How this can be implemented remotely? Because that's really what we're looking at, sharing strategies and how to implement remote interventions.
So right now, what I'm doing is the rec therapists in the school district I'm in, we are putting together a meeting, a Zoom meeting as well, to put together a packet with, with, with the matrix, with activities and ways of dealing and coping with feelings. We will be emailing those all out to all our, our families that we have email addresses to. We've also been directed to be able to mail them. Unfortunately, most of our students, you know, it's really hard to connect with. So that's, that's one of the things I'm working with my, my special ed director on how to get this information out to, to the most kids as possible.
Great, thanks Dan. Appreciate the thoughts and ideas there that you, that you shared for sure. Are there other issues that, things that folks are going through related to the coronavirus and kind of how that's impacting how you're practicing rec therapy right now? Obviously, it's a major impact on folks who are practicing in school. So what else are the issues that you happen to be going through right now?
Yes, please, it's Kristin, everybody, hi. I have been told to roll out a full online program for my students. So I am a little bit freaked out going to tell, full-on telepractice with 45 students. And how do I do that? So I, I would love to hear what other people are doing, how they've rolled this out, resources for sure, and just kind of getting others' feedback on how they, they're going to do that. Anybody? Confidentiality I'm worried about, running a group online and addressing that, Zoom, if you use Zoom and Zoom meetings, those are just a couple of the questions that I have.
Yeah, so Kristin, this is Amanda from New Hampshire, for those of you who can't see me. We have, because we kind of had a heads up that this was coming, so we started to prepare a little bit in advance before they officially decided to close New Hampshire schools. We talked about Zoom. Apparently, the free version is not HIPAA compliant.
Right.
And then the, we have talked, not addressed, but we have talked about the fact that if this goes longer, right now, we have been, our, my direct supervisor has just told us to do maintenance for the next couple of weeks. And then if we have to start addressing IEP goals and learning new skills towards those, we're going to have to meet again and talk about what that looks like. Because confidentiality wise, you're right, Kristin, like when you have your kids in a group online and then their families can walk by and see who else is participating in the group, that is definitely a huge issue and one that we talked about but didn't necessarily have a solution for. And as we all know, having the caseload sizes that we do, even doing individual sessions for all of our kids would be a real nightmare. And also, one thing we've all discussed that I think would be good to talk about tonight and along those lines is the hours of time that are normally in a school day, parents are working and are these kids going to daycare? And if the daycares are closed, are the parents staying home? What does their situation look like? And how are they even going to get any of this work done? And so we've, I've seen a lot already of parents who have been great about posting on the various outlets that we've, our district has chosen, but you know, a lot of the kids I work with, their parents are probably not going to make sure that this is happening. So how do we communicate with them and what does this look like long-term, which I really don't want to think about because I probably will have a mental breakdown? I did not choose a stay-at-home career, so I'm having a really hard time with this.
Amanda, this is Kristin from New Mexico. My district went to direct instruction on the general ed side, which triggers FAP.
Yep.
I bet your district right now is in a maintenance phase across district, but since my district decided to direct instruct all online, we have to provide FAP.
Right.
To provide the services as noted in the IEP.
Yep.
So that's where I am.
Also, can I jump in on a couple of things that came up? So there was some guidance that came out of Education Today at the Fed level, basically saying that the understanding of any need to focus on skill maintenance as opposed to skill instruction based on IDEA requirements, because that was part of the initial discussion was like, okay, if we're moving all of this to an alternative format, then we can't be doing skill development, it needs to be maintenance, right? So Education actually came out today effectively saying like that, that is a misunderstanding of the rules. So if your district is still focused on maintenance, I think you've got an argument to make to basically say like, okay, we can, we can do more than maintenance. And I think it's important to use this time for more than maintenance. There was also some guidance that came out of OCR around, you know, where the balancing act is between privacy and the need to access services and supports. They were focused more on the healthcare side of things than education, but effectively, I think it's a, it's a safe bet to assume that we could use the same interpretation when it comes to like FERPA versus HIPAA, that we're going to need to not exactly meet every letter of the law when it comes to privacy standards if we're going to do this job even halfway.
Yeah.
So there was some guys that came, I'll do my best to track that stuff down and get it out.
Yeah, that'd be great. I know our special ed director had a meeting with our coordinators today. I think she, unfortunately for my special ed director, is brand new this year, so she has a lot of obstacles. So that would be nice if you could get your hands on any of that map.
I also know that Northeast Passage, we got, who's on the call, Hannah and Kayla, you guys are doing some remote instruction, right?
Yeah, we've done, or we're, we're kind of trying to coordinate with case managers. The nice, the nice part about it is that we are contracted in, so a lot of the kind of footwork with parents and setting up those types of things are being done with case managers. We're definitely in a kind of in-between phase where we, we have a lot of case managers that still don't quite know what they're doing on their end yet, so we haven't entirely been pulled in. I do have, I'm currently working with one group and we, because we're contracted into the school, we actually came up with our own waiver that kind of covers the privacy around that, including, you know, we're going to be potentially in your son or daughter's bedroom with them alone, so making sure that the door stays open, appropriate Zoom etiquette or whatever, teleconferencing etiquette. So it includes information, including the fact that, you know, privacy is going to be a little bit different because we do have parents that are assisting participation in the group and things like that. So we can share that if anybody is looking for something like that. But yeah, we, I've been using Zoom. It definitely looks a little bit different, but it wasn't quite, it wasn't quite as bad as I thought it was going to be as far as just being able to engage students. Kind of going over the teleconferencing etiquette was very beneficial at the beginning of it, just because we had a lot of students who wanted to show me their pet hamsters and show me their sister. And so we kind of laid the groundwork for that. And once we got through that, it was pretty effective. Like I said, it was only one group that I've done it with so far, but we're trying tons of different ways to reach a variety of students. I know Hannah is going to be starting a preschool story, storytime circle coming up. So we're kind of just taking it case by case to determine what's the best way to reach the individuals or the students. But we are lucky that a lot of the case managers are helping with the kind of parent portion of that, so.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add that it seems like most schools and districts are sort of, since we're in a multitude of districts, not just one school in particular, every district kind of has their own waiver that they're using with their students. So I know one district that I'm in is using an opt-in format. So if they sign the waiver, they have to opt into the service, which then means that if they don't sign the waiver, they're by proxy opting out, which sort of covers us a little bit because we're saying, yes, we're providing the service. And if they sign up, they opt in. And if they don't sign it, sign up, then it's, it's essentially the same thing as them saying that they're opting out.
I would suggest probably adding some language around, a reminder that we're mandated reporters on some of those waivers, because if we hear a kid getting smacked around in the next room, when we were in that house electronically, we still need to take action on it. So that'd probably be a good idea.
Yeah, that's a good point. We are trying to do our best to use whatever kind of platforms teachers are using in that school district anyway. So if schools are using Google Classroom, then they're kind of pulling us into that. And that kind of just mainstreams, mainstreams obviously the students' education, but just so we're not, you know, having this separate rec therapy group outside of what is kind of happening for those students anyway. So at least in my case, the case manager of all the students has been joining our group virtually.
So, and I feel bad, I'm kind of monopolizing the conversation, I apologize for that, but something I was thinking about earlier today. So in, on the sort of legal side of special education, there's always been this discussion of compensatory services, right? So if a district can't provide the appropriate services to a child for whatever reason, based on least restrictive environment or just access to whatever, the district has the opportunity to be like, okay, well, we'll give you this instead. So as a silver lining kind of guy, I think we've got a great case to talk about rec therapy as a compensatory service for some of those kids who might not have TR in their IEPs. And, you know, if we've got groups or individuals who, let's say we're getting PT services and they're not, if the district can't figure out how to get them PT, can we do some sort of basic gross motor stuff at the group level to get those kids moving a little bit? If counseling isn't working remotely because it's not going to work, can we handle some of those goals and objectives through TR? You know, so it's one of those moments where I think we've got an opportunity to make a case for rec therapy as one of the big players in related services for those districts who are nervous that they're not adequately meeting the needs of their students.
I think that's a great point, Matt, as far as trying to find ways that we can move and kind of increase the spectrum of how we're providing these services right now. That's a, a great opportunity for us, even in the midst of the craziness that's existing right now. So certainly something folks for further thought on that piece of it anyway. You know, one thing that has struck me as we've been talking is we've got lots of questions and lots of challenges. Are people finding anything that they are being particularly successful with when it comes to providing services for kids who are in the schools right now within this current crazy structure that we have? So are there things that you're doing that are, you're saying, you know what, this is kind of working or this is creative and we thought this was going to work or it's not working? Are there things that you're trying that might be beneficial for folks to hear about?
I can talk a little bit to that. Hi, it's Kristin from New Mexico. So where I started is I just, they told us to call the parents and so I just started chatting with the families and connecting with them and just seeing what their needs are right now, not necessarily, you know, what I had planned for a student. I just am getting individualized programs going based off of the feedback that I'm getting from parents as to their immediate needs. Now, I will say I'm hearing all kinds of stuff from families now and how I deal with that has a little, has been a little bit stressful just because my families are under a ton of stress. And so I'm hearing just a lot of feedback about, you know, how, you know, financially and how they're going to make it and just trying to keep everybody calm and stay calm and, and try to kind of be a reassuring voice and stay connected to them. But I've kind of switched my, my perspective to a real individualized program based off of what is going on in the moment for my students and their families. So a parent yesterday was like, we're at each other's throats. And so I had to make some suggestions of why don't we try this or how about this? And I'll send you some resources. And she said that was really helpful, just so that they were not all at each other's throats, as she told me. And so just trying to take an individualized perspective on each student that I work with. That's been kind of my game plan so far.
I just have a question. In terms of those who are working with students right now and kind of either in teledis or using, is the districts, is your district supplying computers or tablets for your students? Like how is that being, or are they just supposed to have it or whoever does it and then doesn't receive service or how are we kind of meeting those needs?
Probably offer a little bit of information about that. That's actually been our biggest, this is Catherine Hoare from Los Angeles area. That's actually been our biggest challenge right now. We've been, as far as our therapists are ready to jump in and provide service. We have over 600 students that have RT on their IEPs and we have 20 providers that are ready to jump in and do servicing, but we're being asked to wait and be patient exactly for that accessibility and equitability issue. So, I mean, our district's kind of unique. Our superintendent to get internet access to all LA Unified students just did a deal with Verizon so that every LA Unified student could have internet access. And just today, they're coming out with how to get each kiddo a device. So, you know, we can't guarantee that every student has a laptop, an iPad, or even a smartphone to use. So that's our, we're, we're kind of waiting to get those pieces put into place until we can figure out what our therapeutic approach is going to be. Are we going to start doing those parent phone calls? Are we going to start, you know, doing those just a, just a one-time face, you know, face-to-face Zoom session with a kiddo to say, hi, checking in, how are you? I miss you, you know, that kind of thing. So it's the equitability and accessibility issue that we're just waiting to get put into place right now. I don't know if that's helpful information, but I know that that's what's the biggest barrier before we can move forward and do anything. Those two pieces have to be in place for us.
What steps are you guys taking to try and find or make devices available for folks? That seems like a daunting task, to say the least. What are, what are some of the things that you're doing to try and make that happen?
That is all happening on a level that's like five levels above me. So we are, we're waiting to hear what that's going to be. Each school had to come up with an initial plan, whether it be a website, packets, and then now that we're going to be in this a little bit longer than we anticipated, the district is coming out with something, but we don't quite have the exact information of what that's going to be. All we've been told is that students will have access to a device. I don't know if that's helpful for anybody, but that's what I can share is happening in our neck of the woods.
Yeah, I was just going to add that I know with Zoom, obviously, this wouldn't necessarily add all of the features that Zoom has to offer, but with Zoom, you can call even from a landline or a non-smartphone. So at least get the audio from the, from the group call. And then, I forget who mentioned it before, but someone, someone mentioned like specific platforms that we were having success with. And this is kind of a diversion from our previous topic, so if, if we're not done with that one yet, I can wait. But we've been exploring Minecraft Education Edition, which has been really, really interesting. And I'm actually really excited to see how we can implement that with some of our student groups. They have pre-designed lessons for social and emotional learning. We're potentially looking at doing something where we assign the Minecraft unit and then do like a facilitated debrief, which then would, even if students had access to audio capabilities through a landline or even a flip phone, they could participate in a group conversation about that activity, which then doesn't address the fact that they need a device to play Minecraft on. But we're just, we're, we're trying to explore all avenues. I mean, if anyone had any questions about that, I'd be happy to, to walk you through it.
Yes, I think my intern and I would be very interested in that.
Yeah, for sure.
This is Amanda.
This is Kayla from Northeast Passage. We, the school-based rec therapists in our program have been working pretty much straight the week and a half to come up with as many resources as we possibly can and have kind of come up with this document that we, of course, would be willing to share. So I don't know if Brent or Thea, if we could set up a Google Doc or something to share those resources, but we've found everything from like online shared whiteboards where you can chat, do group drawing together, to the Minecraft education. So we have done the work the past week and a half, a lot of footwork with researching platforms and tools and kind of online. So that doesn't help with the device situation, but just ways that you can reach and get your students together to be doing a variety of activities to meet whatever, whatever needs you're working on. So we are more than happy to share that if people, if that's something people want to check out. I think that would actually be a great thing for all of us to do because we've been in that same mode of just, you know, stop piling resources because we didn't know what we were going to be asked to do. So we thought, okay, let's, we've come up with activity plans that parents could do. We've kind of like put it in different tiers. What are lesson plan, you know, activity or session plans that we could give parents that they could do? And then what are web-based resources that we can utilize once things get rolling? So I think that'd be great because if we all have a ton of, whether it be activity, lesson activities, anything, or web-based stuff, it would be great to put that all in one place.
Yeah, that would be really helpful because I know, this is Amanda from New Hampshire, that we have a lot of rural, well, we are rural, but we have a lot of areas that are more rural than some other spots of the district, but a lot of kids don't get internet. So basically, we went off of the philosophy of hard copies for everyone of everything. So my intern and I put together a whole bunch of little rec therapy kits that were pretty individualized. Some of, like I pretty much gave everybody a deck of cards and some sidewalk chalk and a couple of other things. But then I individualized them based on like what their, their leisure interests are at the moment, because I know that they are going to need some fun stuff to do when, you know, they have a break or when their family's making them crazy. But it would be nice if we could have a place like a Google Drive or something like we had for the section leader stuff, that we could all share resources. And potentially, once we get back into school, it would be nice to keep that so that we can all be maybe more consistent or communicate more about like what we're doing and the evidence-based stuff and all that mumbo jumbo. But it would be nice to have a shared space for all of the school-based people to access. But it would be nice to have a shared space for all of the school-based people to access.
We are working, your timing is perfect on that. We have a meeting about that tomorrow to figure out about how we can set, get that set up actually on our website. And we are trying to collect all of these resources to provide exactly what you guys are talking about right now. And so certainly happy to give credit where credit is due on these things that get submitted. And so if you can send them to Thea or myself, we are working on creating this repository of folks where folks can access all this. And not just relate to schools, but all the other calls that we've been having as well to try and create a very broad, you know, library of all of these different types of resources. So absolutely want to try and make sure that happens.
Great. Can I ask a quick question or a quick, I don't know, clarification? Um, this is Catherine here. So within our district, we have so many speech and language therapists and occupational therapists. And I really work hard on differentiating why RT is RT and what makes us unique. And frankly, a lot of the times the kids respond to us the best. Is there a way to in organizing that information to maybe put while I know, maybe so we have some common language about, you know, why it like how it's, what makes it rec therapy? Or what, you know, what aspect of this is therapeutic in a recreation way? I just feel like if we could put like, I don't know, a description or a statement or some rationale together. I feel like that would really solidify, you know, what we're doing and why we're doing it. Because, you know, I don't want the OT to replicate what I'm doing, even though, you know, practice and repetition is good for a student to integrate their skills. I don't know, maybe I'm way off base. I don't know.
I, I think that's certainly something that we can, we can work on doing at a broad scale on this. But I think also as folks submit their ideas, if they can identify maybe the kind of some of the targeted areas that these, some of these different interventions or activities are designed for. That would then give more teeth, I guess, to some of this that would kind of help solidify it as these are rec therapy interventions that we're talking about. But I think putting some kind of a broad statement at the front end of all of this is certainly something that we can, we can try and do without, without difficulty.
And I would say, you know, doing a good job of tracking data as you're going. And I know that seems like an extra layer of work that might seem pretty abhorrent right now. But, you know, being able to show, hey, we did this thing because we had to, and it turns out it was awesome. You know, that's how we, you know, necessity is the mother of invention. So when our hands get forced and we get super creative and we come up with these awesome ideas, you know, and then after the fact, once things return back to normal, you know, reach out to your local, you know, universities and be like, I've got this awesome new intervention. Let's, let's validate this a little bit and we can add to that evidence base. I think it's something we need to generally do a better job of across the board is making sure that we're consistently, you know, tracking data, adding to the evidence base. And then sharing those ideas across the board, you know? How many of us worked out of a, one enormous stumbles book that was like 25 years old when you were using it? So, um, you know, we need to keep updating those ideas. And I think this is a great opportunity to do so.
And piggybacking off of that, you know, having the activities is fantastic. But having the means by which you might evaluate the effectiveness of those activities as a part of this would make this, to Matt's point. I mean, it's what would make this, you know, so much even better. And I know that does sound like a lot more work, but that's what will really set this apart is that there's some level of here's how we could measure the effectiveness of, you know, the intervention or of the, you know, of this impact on the children or the adolescents that we happen to be working with.
Especially if you can collect that without having to do a baseline step, because we don't have time for that right now.
One thought that did cross my mind when you guys were talking about the using Minecraft, educational Minecraft. And this doesn't get us away from technology, but I'm almost even wondering like popular TV shows that could have messages in them that people could be watching. And then there is a facilitated conversation that the therapist provides maybe via phone or via, via Zoom or something like that. It focuses on specific content or lessons that were in that popular TV show. So you wouldn't even necessarily be talking like Netflix, but you could talk about network TV. That could then be the prompt for, hey, watch this. And then we're going to have a guided discussion around these topic related to that. And that then starts to, you know, level out that playing field a little bit more for folks to be able to access the technology to be able to view or have that conversation.
That's a great idea. This is Catherine. We have a set of activity sessions that we do that's similar to that. And then the kids have really responded well to it. And it's been great for our middle school and high school population because there's, seems to be a lot more for the younger and middle elementary kiddos. But utilizing video clips of different TV shows has been fantastic for, now with Disney Plus coming out with all their movies. I think there's a lot of opportunity to utilize that, those videos.
Kayla and I, Kayla and I, I think we're about to think to each other. Because Kayla and I.
We're so excited, everyone.
Last summer, we took a group of students to go see Toy Story four. And it was for a social thinking curriculum program at a local middle school. And Toy Story four is chock full of themes and concepts from social thinking. So I don't, you would sort of have to know which platforms your students have access to. But if you need an example of a good movie or like clip to watch, the ones in Toy Story four are top quality. It made it really easy for us to facilitate the debrief.
And one thing that's. Social thinking stuff. That's exciting to hear.
Go ahead, Catherine.
Oh, I love the social thinking stuff. We totally, we use a lot of that. And parents tend to love the way we twist it, different than other services might do it. So I love hearing that there's a good movie out there and I got something to watch on my.
The way we facilitated it was we took a bunch of social thinking themes and we assigned one to each student. And they had one thing to think about while watching the movie. And it was examples of that social thinking theme that came up throughout. And then after we watched the movie, each student reported back on their social thinking theme. And it was really successful because instead of thinking about all of the social thinking themes that exist in the whole wide, the whole wide movie. They just had one thing to focus on more specifically.
Uh, yeah, and one thing, I don't know if it's new, it's new to me. But if you did want to use a TV show or a movie that's on Netflix, there's something called Netflix Party. So through Netflix and a bunch of people can sign on, watch the same video, movie, whatever at the same time. And you can actually chat. So using maybe a specific show or a movie, you know, pause it, chat about whatever scene you want to. Could be an effective platform if you were wanting to do something similar with students virtually.
And then you don't run into the issue of, oh, well, you started one minute before me and now I haven't seen it yet. And it's all glitchy with Netflix Party, you can seamlessly watch the whole thing with, with other people.
I just started using something called PlayPosit, which is, you know, it's provided to me through the university. But what I like about it, and you can, you can purchase your own subscription, is that you could put in your own videos. Or I could get YouTube videos, which are all public access. And I put them in and then I could ask questions throughout. And so I could poll them, I could ask them questions, I could ask multiple choice, I could ask true and false, I could have discussions. And so they have to pause and go back. And so I've been using that all semester with my undergraduates. But I could see how that could work moving forward with rec therapy and maybe Leisure Ed. Or, you know, or I teach a friends and relationships class and how I could, you know, show different videos talking about social skills and then stop and say, okay, what did you just observe? Was that a passive, assertive or aggressive communication style? And have them select and then I get feedback. So it does, they could do it on their own time versus have me. But I have something that's data-driven that I could see that they completed the entire PlayPosit. And so I'm having fun playing, playing with that all semester and I'm getting used to it. And I'm starting to think about how I could transition what I've been doing at the university level with teaching my socialization and sexuality class.
Can you type that out in the chat so I can see how it's spelled?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the, the thing I want to mention real quick is that as you need new technology or equipment or whatever. If you're going to your special ed director or whomever needs to okay any expenditures. If your state has declared a state of emergency, you can actually make the case that the district might be able to recoup any spending that you've made specific to instruction through the COVID-19 pandemic. At probably, the best guess is going to be around like a 75% rate of, of payback. So it's going to obviously depend on how many claims get filed and whether it's going to be worth it to even go through that process. But if a district needs to spend like a substantial amount of money, if LA Unified School District decided to buy a Chromebook for every kid in the district to get through this next, you know, however many months. That's going to need to come back through FEMA. So as, you know, if you're looking to PlayPosit and it costs a couple hundred bucks, ask that, you know, it's worth asking whoever makes those financial decisions.
I also appreciate your advocacy, Kath, was it Catherine that, that mentioned that? I think we have a new strategic plan for ATRA and we have an advocacy and legislative team. And I think that's one of the big focuses of that is how do we better advocate for RT services across the board in all settings? And we need to start, a few years ago, we put together fact sheets for every setting. But now, I mean, we need to be producing stuff, you know, a couple of times a year, not just once every four years, you know, as the national profession. And so, but we need help. And so anyone who has, you know, created letters and Margaret's going to share what she created. I know I've created stuff to advocate for RT in the schools through the years. We need to start sharing that, putting together, you know, some type of white papers. I know Kristen's been big on that, like we need to get something out there so that we have something to, to advocate for our services in the districts. And so let's start, you know, gathering that information and sharing. I know people get scared about this intellectual property, but we're not going anywhere as a profession in the schools if we don't start collaborating.
I will tell you, in LA Unified, it is absolutely blowing up. And we can't get our assessments, and I think Alicia could probably speak to it a little bit. We can't get our assessments to stop long enough to keep our services up to, at a place where we feel good about it because we're being spread so thin. So it's like, I feel we could definitely help out with the advocacy piece, especially with some of our parent feedback and teacher feedback that we've been given. That might actually really help.
Are there other thoughts or ideas that, that folks have that they wanted to share or other questions that people have that they wanted to ask?
Um, I just have a quick little thing. Is anybody presenting for ATRA on schools? We need to start presenting. Anybody? Any takers out there?
I've wanted to do it for a long time, but I've been a little nervous.
I, you know, why don't we talk? Because I'd be more than happy to write it up and do the major parts of it, like explaining what RT in the schools is. And then if we could just get from different school districts, how you present it in your school district, even just a short, just 10 minutes from, from the different school districts across the country. That would be awesome, but I don't mind taking the lion's share of it in, in that session. But I'd love to just see how other people are implementing this across.
I am more than happy to share with you, we present to people locally and at the state level all the time.
Awesome.
So, yeah, and I've even presenting to our own other related services about what RT is and their minds are blown. So I'm, yeah, definitely happy and I think, you know, to show you how LA Unified implements rec therapy, happy to share that.
We need you, LA. You guys are the biggest program in the country. We need you.
Trust me, I get a little emotional, I know it's a little crazy, but I get a little emotional sometimes because I'm like, it is such an amazing opportunity. And I don't, it's, it's been an incredible adventure on how this all came to be. So I am feeling like I definitely want to give back to the field and, you know, say, hey, this is how we did it. Let me show you what we, you know, what happened.
I'll help you. I will help you. We just got to get it out there. You guys are the largest school district in the country and if you can implement it, we can implement it anywhere. So I'd love to help you guys with that. So we'll stay in touch. We've been emailing. I reached out to them when I was presented with this task to put together in a week. And so let's keep in touch and get this out to everybody in, in the RT community. So.
Happy to do it.
Awesome.
The deadline just got extended for that too. So y'all have until May 2nd to put those proposals together. So please do, it would be phenomenal to see, you know, multiple, multiple sessions coming from schools about schools, how we do rec therapy in schools. That'd be absolutely fantastic. So please consider putting, putting something together, multiple people anyway. So also my folks may not have seen it, but Thea did ask if anybody could share their name states and roles in the schools. If you could just type that into the chat, that'd be great. So we kind of have a list of everybody who was here and just a part of that with your name. So that would be helpful information to include there. Other thoughts, comments or questions? Thank you for bringing that up about the presentations. That's an important piece.
I did have a question. Amanda, you said that you guys are kind of working off of paper packet type things. How are you assessing or evaluating student progress based off that? Are you having them write things up or, oh, am I muted? No, I'm not.
No, you're not.
We're kind of trying, so for us, we're contracted into schools, we're kind of thinking about billing. So when you have a virtual group sitting in front of you and you work with them for an hour, that's easy. But if you are sending an activity home for a student to kind of complete at home and then you're looking at maybe what they wrote based off of that or what they provided based off of that, that's kind of where we're having some difficulty with right now.
Yeah, it's a little bit all over the place because, um, as LA was talking earlier, I have a similar problem. I'm only in one district, but in five different towns. And so all of those towns and schools do something completely different. So we've been, do you guys use ClassDojo? Oh, okay. ClassDojo is what we've been using. All of the teachers have it in their classrooms up until, I want to say pre-K through fifth grade. And then I work in a self-contained program at the middle school and high school level that also use ClassDojo. But the typical classrooms used in middle school and high school use Google Classroom and that kind of stuff. So with the younger kids with ClassDojo, like I took a video today and posted it on my particular student's account. And just said, hey, remember this is what we have been working on. We're, we're doing the social thinking curriculum. We just read Thinking Thoughts and Feeling Feelings, one of the pre-K younger books. And so we're talking about that right now. And so I sent home some worksheets with him about what emotion you're feeling and what you're thinking during that, when you have that emotion. And so I took a little quick video and said, hey, you know, remember we're doing this and, and here's the activity that I sent home. And his mom actually took pictures of it and sent it back to me through the Messenger app on that. Other parents, I'm trying to set up like FaceTime or video. It's really hard. It's all over the map. And I, like I said earlier, I have some parents who are barely even checking anything with the special ed teachers. And, you know, they're more communicative with them on a regular basis and they're not really reaching out too much. So it's kind of all over the board. I've been trying emailing with my older kids in high school who have computers. And they were all able to bring their computers home if they normally wouldn't have. I've tried emailing them. That's not always reliable either. So if I find anything that's really successful, you know, but it's true. It is, it is different when you're billing. And so I know in New Mexico, you have to participate in at least an eight-minute face-to-face to bill for services. As of right now. But I feel like every week, we're meeting three times a week. And I mean, every week you're, we're, we're getting different guidance because it's fluid and evolving, you know, as contracted workers and contracted providers. So when you work for a district and you're getting a salary, it's a little different because you're getting paid regardless just for making contact with students. Versus when you have to bill for every, you know, 15 minutes you see a student. And so we are, I mean, it's fluid at the state level, just like, you know, so I think you just have to stay up with it and make sure that you're constantly following up. Because what's dictated to you today might change tomorrow.
I'll make a pitch for Google Classroom, not because I've used it myself, but because my kids are using it for school right now. And it's really intuitive and easy and it, you know, it's. And it's really intuitive and easy and it, you know, it's a good learning management system. Like frankly, I'd, I'd use it over Canvas for my own stuff right now. So, um, I think something like that might be a good system in terms of, uh, access to your students as well as their families because it's basically built for that.
Yeah. Adding on to what Matt was saying, um, I'm looking at setting up a Google Classroom for a unified arts rotation that I run at one of the schools I'm in. And you can set up a Google form, um, with some type of like even multiple choice. Like, did you do this activity? Like some interaction that, that requires that the kids click or type or post a picture or something that, that's like a required portion of the assignment on Google Classroom, which just I think be set up the accountability that like, yes, we provided this paper copy or it's not a, it's not a teleconference. It's more of a, like a written assignment. But it gives you that option to kind of check for completion in a lot of different ways.
Yeah, it's interesting that as parents, you may, sometimes we have some different insights because we see things on the other side. Uh, you know, Matt was saying with his kids using Google Classroom, you know, my kids are, I've got one who's using Google Classroom. Actually both are now, but one who's used Classroom Dojo as well. And that's been, you know, a really effective thing, uh, just to see from a parental side of the, of the equation. So seeing it from that perspective can sometimes give us some different insights. Well, I want to be respectful of folks' time. I think this has been a, a really productive and some great information got shared here during, uh, during this, this meeting. So, um, I want to go ahead and, uh, and wrap us up. It looks like we've had a lot of folks who've been able to put their names and information into the chat. We'll have a record of the chat. We'll have a record of the video. It will go up on our, uh, our website for anybody to view. So if you have folks that weren't able to be here tonight, just direct them to the website. They'll be able to see it. Anybody can view it. And we do want folks to share it far, share it wide. Make sure anybody who wants to take a look at it gets to take a look at it. And then, uh, we will be working on that repository starting, uh, starting tomorrow. So that'll be something else that we're, uh, we're really trying to make some positive steps towards. So we, uh, we do want to make sure that we're providing as many resources as we can for folks during this time. But I think as we move forward, we're going to see, you know, Matt mentioned that, you know, necessity is the mother of invention. We're going to see some things, positive things, I think, come out of this as far as how we provide services in a lot of new creative ways. And so hopefully we'll be able to be kind of on the cutting edge of all of that as rec therapists. So.
One more thing really quick.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Remember leisure ed guys, in the schools, leisure ed is huge and it's, you know, part of our scope. And this is a perfect time where we could provide leisure ed via remote access. So think about your leisure ed background and how to provide leisure ed in the schools remotely. Cause this is, this is us, you know, so use that. Nobody else in the schools is providing leisure ed.
That's a great point, especially now when folks are scrambling to try and figure out what do I do with all of this time that is now on my hands, that is not obligated to other things. The leisure ed piece, you're absolutely right, Thea. That's fantastic. So good. All right. Well, thank you guys very much. Appreciate y'all being on and y'all enjoy the rest of your day or evening, wherever you are. Thea, it looks really nice where you are right now. So we'll all try not to be too jealous of, uh, yeah. We can see some other, other views from people's, uh, people's cameras there. But, uh, thank you all for coming on. Appreciate it and look forward to touch base with you guys at some other point in time. So have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone.
Nice meeting. Bye guys.
Bye bye.